Thank you for joining us. Brockton Community Access and WXBR are partnering to bring you one of the few looks you get for the school committee races here in the city of champions. Today, we have two candidates running for an open seat on the Ward Three School Committee. We have Alicia Jean Clark, I'm gonna get this right, and Mark D'Agostino, who are both running. And what we set out in the letters is we have a one-minute opening statement and two-minute closing statement. So I will start with Alicia on the one-minute opening, and then I'll reverse it on the other end. And we'll be going back and forth, you guys will get to take your turns over and over again. So, one minute, Alicia.
All right. My name's Alicia Jean Clark. I'm a graduate of UMass Boston and Roger Williams Law School. I started as a mediator in the Rhode Island courts, and now I work for Mortgage Master as their in-house counsel. I also run an after-school program for individuals with special needs. I do that at the Asheville School on Tuesday and Thursday nights, and I work with the community school program to make this available for, right now, middle school children. My goal is not to make political promises. I find that a lot of times, political promises, depending on the atmosphere, don't get upheld. But my goal, if I get elected, is to listen to the people in my ward and weigh their concerns with what would be the best for the children in our school system.
Thank you. Mark?
I'm Mark D'Agostino. I'm running for Ward Three School Committee. I graduated from Framingham State College and currently run a small business here in Brockton. It's a family business, been here since 1986. And also, I'm the third generation of my family to live here in Brockton, going back to the 50s. So certainly have strong roots here in the city. And what I'm, the reason that I'm running is that I feel the schools are the most important part of our community. There's nothing more important than how we educate the kids of the city. And so I think that I can make a meaningful contribution to the school committee and to the city in this way, so.
Thank you. First question is Ron. And we'll stick with the minute. If we get into more complex, we'll give you two minutes, okay? Ron, first question.
So a lot of people have opinions about how a school committee should be run in the school system, but only a few, such as yourselves, come out and want to actually participate and, I assume, change things. What was it that gave you that push and drive to say, "I'm gonna do this"?
Start with Mark.
Well, I think it's one of the most important roles in the city, first of all, like I said. And, you know, it's just an important thing to do in the city, to be involved in the schools. They have the ability to bring the whole community together. They're responsible for educating the future of the city. And, you know, having gone through Brockton Public Schools myself, you know, it was an opportunity to get back involved and give back in a really meaningful way again.
Okay.
My reasoning for running for school committee actually started with my program Running for Shining Stars. I realized that there were lots of gaps in certain areas of the educational system. And, you know, by working with community schools, I discovered, you know, there are certain areas that I felt the school committee, you know, could work better, maybe with the parents and the community, and make changes to develop new programs that would help out the schools and, you know, work better with the teachers and parents and kind of form a unity. So, you know, growing up here, I always thought that there was always a way to better unite the two together.
Okay. My question is about time and time commitment. You both sound very successful in what you do, I know of both of you. Do you have time to be a member of the school committee? Has anybody read you the fine print before you started out on this endeavor? Start with Mark.
Yeah, that was one of the first things that I started to look into. You know, when I decided I wanted to run, I started to ask about the time commitment. And it was kind of interesting. The first thing that was, I was told is the school committee works harder than the city council, and has more meetings and more commitments, you know, than, like I said, than the city council does, between subcommittee meetings and school committee meetings and PTO and PAC meetings and, you know, being out there, involved in all of that. So, yeah, I do have the time for it. You know, I think it's important, and it's one of those things that it's important enough that you make time for it.
Okay.
I agree with Mark. I definitely have time. I've spoken with, over the past couple of years, spoken with school committee members, and understanding their commitment of constantly running from one meeting to the next. And it's definitely something that concerned me when I first decided to run, but I know that, you know, I'm a time planner, and I can fit in any amount of meetings, whether it's running from one school to another, or, you know, making the most of my time.
Okay. Ron?
Out of what you may have followed with the school committee in the past, is there, is there any decision or any direction that the school committee took that you felt was not appropriate, in your mind, that you didn't agree with, or not?
Alicia, first.
I think in the past, some of the things that concerned me the most with school committee and maybe the interactions between the school committee and the teachers, I don't think always has played out as well as it could have. I think there should be a better connection between the schools and the school committee. And that's one thing that's concerned me over the past. But otherwise, I think the school committee has played a great role and tries the hardest that they can to be involved in everything in the town.
Okay, Mark?
You know, I know in the past, there were a lot of conflicts on the school committee. And from what I've seen, you know, that seems to have subsided, and for the most part, they're a lot more focused on getting things done and remembering why they're all there, which is to work on behalf of and for the students of Brockton. So I think in the past, there were some issues, but I think they've worked those out.
Okay. My question is for both of you, of course. Any different ways that you might communicate with your constituents to keep them informed or let them know what's going on in the system, or even to get them involved? Mark?
Sure. Well, I think that, first of all, you've got things like Facebook that you can use these days to communicate and email. But also, you know, hopefully, there are ward meetings. I know there were ward meetings that happened from time to time, and being involved and being a part of that and making sure that, you know, we're getting out there and letting people know what the school committee is working on. The other way is, and part of the responsibility of the school committee person is to go to PAC meetings and PTO meetings and communicate what the school committee is doing, and also listen to what parents are concerned about and take that back to the rest of the committee.
Okay. Alicia?
I agree with Mark. I think social media, I think, would play a huge role in getting the word out to a lot of parents. Also, you know, the PAC meetings are a big part of that. But I also think holding, you know, being part of events that take place outside of those PAC meetings and, you know, going to school events and having time to talk with the parents afterwards or beforehand, I think, also plays a big role in that. So I would use that time as well to get to know the issues and what the parents are looking for.
Okay. I'm gonna put in a plug, like I do every two years, for electronic town meetings or using your cable channel on School Channel 98 or Government Channel 12 to get the word out. WXBR has guests on all the time. Ron hosts a daily show, and, you know, just another opportunity. Would either of you be interested in doing something like that? Would I just put you on the spot?
Absolutely. Of course.
Of course, yeah.
Good. Okay. Ron?
Have the two of you had any quote-unquote debates yet? Is this the first time that you are going back and forth together?
This is the first time we've ever met.
So you're not familiar with each other's viewpoints in any sense of the word?
No.
Okay. So I guess I would have to ask you then things that would bring that out, so that the voters can see the differences between. You've agreed on most of what we've discussed so far, and I assume you might agree on quite a bit. Without having previously named anything that you wanted to overhaul the system with, what makes you the better candidate? I know you both have impressive backgrounds, as Mark said and you've said, but what really makes you the person?
Start with Mark.
Well, I think I bring a lot to the table. First of all, like I said, you know, I'm certainly invested in the community and as a member of the community. But I also, one of the primary functions of the school committee is to handle the budget and manage the budget, and that's experience that I have as a business owner. You know, I do that all the time at work every day, as well as, you know, dealing with different vendors and HR-type things as well. So I think I have that kind of experience that will help me on the school committee and be successful. And, but also, you know, I was a student at Kennedy School and sat in that lunchroom and in those classrooms and played on that playground and lived in the neighborhood around Huntington as well. So I understand the area and I know the area, you know, and so I think that will also, you know, help me in serving the kids in the community in Ward Three.
Alicia?
I don't like Mark. I grew up in that, you know, I've grown up in Brockton my whole entire life. I think one thing that might set me apart a little bit is, over the past three years, I have worked intimately with the school, community schools, and, you know, gotten to know people in the special ed department, gotten to know different people on the school committee, working with them, trying to get programs in place for, you know, my focus through the past three years has been on special needs issues. But definitely over that time, I've gotten to know a lot of the ways that programs get developed and, you know, budgetary issues as far as, you know, what we can fit in the budget and what programs have to be cut or, you know, trimmed down, so to speak, to, so that other programs can help different classes of kids in the school system. So I think that's definitely one way that I can help out.
Okay. We've heard a lot in the last few years, U.S. News and World Report, New York Times, about how successful a high school Brockton High is. What we haven't heard about a lot in the media is the middle schools. We do hear about the elementary schools with all the nice activities and different things that they do. Could you talk about that a little bit and actually see if you agree or disagree with me on that in terms of what you would do to bring maybe middle schools into the forefront, their, you know, real formative years? Has what you heard in Brockton showed you success or not success? Alicia?
I definitely think that one of our gaps in the school system right now is the middle school. I think, you know, some of the rearrangement of the middle schools from junior highs into middle schools, I think, may have caused some of that gap. But I think that focusing more programs and maybe implementing programs that are similar to those that we have in the high school, the elective programs, like focusing more on the music programs or SHOT-type programs, art programs, would help out to establish the middle schools also. Middle schools, their sports programs aren't as developed as the high schools, so maybe a transitionary period in the middle school, I think, might help as well to, you know, really promote the uniqueness of each individual in the middle schools, as that's the time when you're kind of coming into your own. I think that would definitely help the students out.
Mark, second question.
Yeah. So I think, you know, what's kind of gotten lost in the shuffle is, we've had the ultra-successful high school, and then we've had some success in the elementary schools. We've also had a lot of work to do in the elementary schools, and so a lot of focus and resources have been, and resources have gone into the elementary schools. So the poor middle schools have certainly gotten lost in the shuffle. You know, I think that one thing we need to do is put the flashlight on the middle schools more and highlight the middle schools more. But we also have to, I think, reach out and have a little more, I guess, parent involvement. And the reason I say that is, I took the time to sit down with Kevin Caro, the principal over at South Junior High, and that was something that he said to me, that the biggest concern he has is, you know, that there's, at the middle school level, there's a little less parent involvement. And so that was, that was something that came from him, that he'd like to see more of. So I think if we could get more information out there to the parents of middle schoolers as well, I think that, you know, maybe we could get more focus on the middle schools so that they're not the forgotten part of the school system.
In our experience, just speaking from cable, is South is a very dynamic school. Kevin's a very dynamic principal, a lot of involvement over there. I always felt, this goes back a few years, that you gotta really tap the resource there with the students to get them on the right path to get to high school. And now, as both of you have said, with the changes that have occurred, I mean, it used to be easy, north, south, east and west. Now there's eight of them, they're mixed in, it's K through eight and this through five, and, you know, it gets a little crazy. So thank you for addressing that. Ron?
How do you get parents involved in their kid's education when a good percentage of them might feel that their kids are smarter than they are and they can't help them with homework? They don't even understand what they're doing, which happens with everybody actually at a point. But how do you, how do you make that more of an equal playing field? Maybe that's a reason that parents don't get involved as much in helping their kids.
Mark, first.
Well, I think that, you know, even if they can't help, certainly having them involved in making sure, you know, asking what they're learning about, and I'm just trying to think back to when I was that age, you know, my parents always asked about what were we learning about in school, what had we done, you know, that week in school. And so it doesn't necessarily have to be about helping with homework as much as just, and going to the school and asking questions of the administrators and teachers at the school. You know, if they're struggling, like you said, with helping them with homework, maybe they can reach out to the school itself and, you know, work it from that angle. So.
Okay. Alicia?
I think one of the biggest things is to open up communication channels between the parents and the teachers and make sure that the information that's getting sent out to the students in the school actually gets home to the parents. I think that's one of the biggest gaps. I know when I was in school, sometimes that stuff stayed in the bottom of my backpack. So I think whether it's sending out an email or mailing it to the home, I think a lot of that might help get the parents more involved, because if there's an open channel of communication, the parents are more apt to talk to the teacher about what's going on, how's my student doing, rather than just having it in the bottom of the backpack and the kid saying, "Yeah, I never got it." So I think a lot of that. And I also think having open houses where the parents can go, not a parent-teacher conference, so to speak, but more of an open, relaxed environment where the parents can go and talk to the teachers and get an idea of what's going on and what their student needs to be doing would help as well.
Okay. For a while, it was interesting, because your school committee member in Ward Three originally wasn't sure whether he was gonna go for another office or stay and stand for reelection. And then all of a sudden, it was like, okay, we need to find candidates for that office. Was there any burning, passionate issue that got either one of you into the race for school committee? Start with Alicia.
It wasn't a burning issue, so to speak. I think it was just an overall want to help out and to make sure that, you know, I've seen a lot of students over the last year kind of working in, I've been working in the middle school with my program and seeing a lot of the kids kind of fall through the cracks or, you know, just information not getting back and forth. And I really felt that being on school committee, I could help out and generate some sort of knowledge or understanding and help out so that those gaps don't exist anymore, or at least we close the gaps. I think that was the biggest thing for me.
Mark, go, won't you?
You know, for me, it was, like I said, I wanted to get more involved in the community, and, you know, the schools are such an important part of that, you know, in addition to obviously having the primary responsibility of educating the kids in the community. You know, they can bring the community together. And, you know, it was really just about the importance of the schools and the community. I mean, what's the first question people ask when they're looking at moving to a community? How are the schools? It's the first thing people want to know about, so. And recognizing what an important role it is and me wanting to do something really important and meaningful to give back to the city, I thought that it was a great opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Ron?
The dropout rate is still uncomfortably high. How do you get a student, and I think, not that I'm running for anything, but I think the crux of everything is to get a student excited about education. If they don't have that excitement, they're not gonna learn anything and they're just gonna leave the whole environment. How do you get a student excited about education?
Alicia?
I think one of the main things is to have, well, Brockton has great teachers, but there's a lot of gap, either age gap or just a cultural, there's a lot of cultural gaps in the city. I think bridging those gaps would help students stay in school longer. Also, getting students more involved in programs, making programs more accessible to students. I know a lot of times, the kids have to get the late bus, especially at the high school level, and, you know, sometimes that prevents them from participating in other programs. So developing a support system and allowing students to get more involved, I think, is a big step, you know, to prevent kids from dropping out of school, 'cause the more involved you are and the more you feel accepted in the environment, the more willing you are to stay there.
Mark?
Yeah, I think there's two things that come to mind. One is more involvement in various extracurricular activities and opportunities that are there, promoting those to students who, you know, maybe, I guess, the term is at risk of dropping out, but finding what their interests are and maybe using that as a way to pull them back in with some of the additional programs that are available outside the classroom. But also, the other thing is maybe looking at, and I know there are some programs like this, but maybe expanding that, you know, four-year college isn't the right fit for every person out there and every student out there. Sometimes vocational education makes more sense. And so looking at that aspect of it too, of let's look at the individual student and talk to them a little bit and see if we can come up with some other options, like a vocational type of training, to put them in a direction that they're gonna be interested in and that they will follow through with. So those are just two ideas that come to mind.
Could have me talk about that one for a while.
I'm sure.
This is the Brockton School Committee race, not some of these.
I understand.
In terms of the relationship between the school committee and the superintendent, right now, we've chosen, the school committee unanimously chose to bring Kathleen Smith in here. In past years, it wasn't so unanimous, okay? How important is it? I heard you talk about mediation. I know you do insurance, and you were trying really hard not to do a commercial for your company, so we appreciate that. But talk about your skills that you have individually in terms of building consensus, working with other people, and how do you think that'll relate to the school committee? I think, Mark, first.
Okay. So I think, you know, a key thing is to, obviously, there have to have been differences of opinion. I mean, that's, if everybody just agrees, then really nothing gets done. But you have to look at what you have in common and then discuss your differences. And you just through communication and discussion, you work that out. I mean, it's great that that decision was unanimous, but, you know, a lot of times, you're right, it won't be. And you just have to communicate openly and honestly, and, you know, I think you can work most everything out if you just have open and honest communication with each other and, you know, focus on the things you do agree on and have in common. And, you know, that's a lot of area where I have experience in doing that kind of thing, as well as, you know, looking at the person, like you mentioned, with hiring the superintendent. You know, one of the things I like is that, if I'm not mistaken, her entire career has been in the Brockton school system. And so, and maybe that's why it was unanimous, but I just, you know, that's something that I really like about her, is that her entire career has been here.
Okay. Alicia?
I think one of the things is, of being a mediator, that we learn is, you know, nobody leaves mediation 100% satisfied. If everybody is, you know, a little bit, you know, dissatisfied, a lot of times, more things get done. You know, you have a little bit from each person that comes into the melting pot, and sometimes the result is, you're not all happy, but the result is a lot better than, you know, what it could have been if everybody just agreed in the initial circumstance. I also, working for a large company, it helps when you have all these ideas thrown off of each other. I find the best things and, you know, the greatest things in companies get done when you have a huge group of people come together and you're constantly bouncing ideas off of each other, 'cause that way you can, you know, oh, this little piece works, but this doesn't. And then by putting that all together, you get a, you know, the puzzle pieces fit and you get a nice picture.
Okay. Thank you both. I believe we have the five-minute sign, if I'm not mistaken, Jay? Correct? So we're gonna go to the closing statements. We have two minutes for the closing statements, and, boy, where did we start off, Ron?
I didn't know we started.
Oh, he didn't know we started? There we go.
I have no idea.
Who had opening first?
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna reverse the order. So, Mark, you get to go first, two minutes closing statement.
Sure. Well, you know, one of the issues that I think is important, and I'll use this to touch on that, is the facilities we have in our elementary school system. They, we're up almost 1,000 students this year over last year, and we're, the numbers are showing that they're struggling to keep class size manageable. And so we're going to have to address that in the next few years, whether it be in addition to the buildings we have or another building, you know, there's a lot to that. But that's certainly a huge issue that we're going to have to deal with. And so the other thing too that I'd like to point out is that you mentioned that having the time and to be on the school committee, and it's a big commitment. And, you know, part of what I've done to prepare for that commitment is to be at the school committee meetings for the last several months. PAC meetings and PTO meetings have been to those. And I've also had meetings with the principals of the schools in Ward Three that I asked if I could learn about what their concerns were for the schools. So I, you know, have been out trying to demonstrate my commitment to the position and educating myself on the issues that are gonna be facing the school committee real soon, such as, you know, our aging and slowly getting overpopulated elementary system.
Thank you. Alicia?
I think one of the things that concerns me the most is the current allocation of funds. I think a lot of things could be rearranged a little better to, you know, help with, as Mark said, the aging schools. I see one of them, the Kennedy School that I grew up with, you know, the facilities are getting much older. And I think that's gonna be a real problem in the future with how many aging elementary schools and junior highs and even the high school that we have in the city right now. And another issue that I see, I know a lot of families deal with the busing issue of what schools are, you know, their kids are gonna go to, what programs are allocated to each school, and, you know, the fact that we only have programs in certain schools and, you know, such as the George School, the Spanish program. I think that's gonna be one of the upcoming issues, is whether, you know, these programs get expanded to other schools to, you know, prevent the strain that busing puts on the city. But, you know, and as far as the time issue, I know that, you know, with like my program that I run after school, meeting, constantly meeting with principals and the school committee and community schools, and that's always something that, at least my job currently allows me to, you know, make time for all of those meetings and readjust my schedule. So I, you know, see no problems having time and working, you know, having, creating a great working relationship with community schools and the current school committee members.
Well, thank you both very much for participating in this. It's nice to see everybody sit in a room, be civil, answer questions, get along, and the voters will choose on November 5th. You're watching Brockton Community Access and WXBR's coverage of the school committee race in Ward Three. Stay tuned for more election coverage.